Since we had some technical difficulties, I'd like the record to state that no action is taken while the while we were down online. And we are now leaving the land bank meeting and coming back into session as the city council. We are on agenda item F, which is items for future consideration. And Mr. Styles, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. So everybody knows we kind of have regular needs as far as equipment goes with utility apartments in particular, our big equipment users. And so we've tried to be proactive and regular in our replacement, some of those things to avoid, you know, costly future repairs or things being down. And so we've got a fairly long list of equipment that we need to replace. But we've been working as a group as far as utilities go to figure out what what we really need to zero in on for 2022. We think that we've got pretty well nailed down that we would like to replace our two backhoes, which are fairly fairly old. One that's pretty old, has a lot of issues. We would like to go back in with a an excavator, a used excavator, a new or lightly used rubber tire backhoe, so coming back with the backhoe. And then a mini excavator, which is kind of like a mini, well, it's a mini excavator. So it just sits on tracks or tires and it's great for working in small areas or tight areas where there's not a lot of room in your right of ways. We see that a lot. We could have used it really a lot this last year when we were doing stuff with the fiber optics. We found a lot of need for getting in with more of a narrow bucket and not being as disruptive and being a little bit more targeted with our repairs. So those are kind of the things we would like to do. Of course, coming back in with those purchases are somewhere in the neighborhood of 200 to 210,000. So you're taking two pieces and going with three. We feel like we can probably sell our old stuff to in the rain. I can't remember why I'm there. Oh, 35,000 is kind of the estimated sale price with that. That may or may not be what it is. We'd probably use Purple Wave or something like that if that was the way we went. We would probably be looking at doing, we don't have enough in the the equipment reserve fund to purchase all that equipment outright. We'd probably look at any used equipment. I don't like doing any kind of notes on on used equipment. I think that's a bad idea. But if we had a new thing like the mini excavator, for example, that would be a new piece of equipment. And we would probably look at the financing deal on that. But all the others we would want to put together, probably cash for. So that that's kind of our idea. We wanted to get some feedback. Obviously, any of those, we haven't done anything with it yet. But and if that's something that the council is okay with, then then we will continue, excuse me, continue to move forward and look at maybe bringing you some hard numbers on these things.
Any questions? When we're talking utilities, I assume we're suggesting that all of our utilities, water, sewer, electric and and streets would would be using this equipment, correct?
Yeah, these are primarily aren't, these are primarily for water, sewer and street. Electric probably would get into it a little bit, but maybe not so much. So we were really looking at funding these through water, sewer and street. Electric, not not as big a user enough. We all use the equipment collectively, but these aren't really pieces that they use specifically. So there is a lot more specific.
What is the marketplace for equipment like this? Because, you know, like everything else, are we are we looking at some issues finding equipment of this type?
Not not near as bad as some of our more conventional equipment like our service trucks. We've had a lot of issues trying to find that. Excavators usually aren't too bad. The market isn't as crazy and in the buying and selling of used large equipment like that either. So not near as volatile in my, in what I've seen recently anyway. So I think we would probably be okay in trying to get that. I don't think there'd be a lot of wait time for things like a mini excavator. It's not a not a high, high demand consumer product, I guess is what I would say. So there's really no action that needs to be taken. We're just.
Again, any, any questions or comments? Okay. Well, we'll now move on to the year in review. It's hard to imagine that the year has gone by. It seems like it, there were times it was going pretty slow, but then overall it kind of, it kind of went, went flying along.
Yeah.
And there's always more things in there than you realize. So.
Start writing it. Yes.
Styles will let you take us through it.
Yeah. So I'm not going to walk everything through that. I don't know that we need to relive 2021 too much. But kind of the biggest thing, I guess, for us that doesn't really show up on council action lists are all the turnover we had. Well, we had a lot of turnover, but a lot of retirements. We had eight people retire when we went back and looked at that and started adding up their experience with with us and the city. And it ended up being 225 years of experience that retired in last year. So a lot, that's a lot. And then, you know, in addition to that, we had 10 other positions turn over at some point during the year. So it's been kind of the year of human resources, I guess. Just a strange, strange kind of event, circumstance of events that we'd have everybody at once. But, you know, I would say that we've got a great team. We've done a good job hiring back and putting people on our team. I feel like we're in a good spot and able to move forward there. So it's, and we even changed our legal team a couple, couple times this year. It's just something we don't normally do and also the city prosecutor. So we've had to change that twice this. A little unusual, but we're moving forward. I like where we're at, you know, from a human resource perspective. I think we're doing really well. We've got a good, good group. We still have a couple of open positions we're looking to fill. But overall, pretty, pretty good shape. The other thing, you know, it's hard to ignore, the COVID-19 pandemic continues to be it tends to be a thing. And we've seen, you know, at the beginning of last year, we're talking mask mandate. That was one of the things we did in January of last year. And then we've had, you know, kind of this ebb and flow of of things. And right now we're kind of at a high point again with infection rates. And that has impacted city operations. You can't, can't deny that. We have, you know, we first started getting vaccines, our first responders got vaccines early on. And then everybody else had an opportunity to get those. And I think by and large, we've had a lot of people take us up on that. But, you know, we've even, we've even done in-house screening. We're doing a lot of screening for that. And we used up our last test a couple of weeks ago and we're actually in need of some more. So, you know, that has created some issues for us just from internal staffing and making sure things keep moving. But it also created supply chain issues, which I mean, you mentioned that, Mr. Mayor, about our vehicles and what that looks like for us. So we, we continue to see issues with just getting some, some of our normal supplies in. And it's sometimes really strange things you wouldn't think you would have an issue with. PVC pipe has gone crazy. I mean, if you're trying to buy PVC pipe, good luck. So, you know, those things continue to to impact us and will probably be continuing from the near future at least. But then we move on to some of the things. I kind of put like a highlight list out there because I think we did do it. We have a lot, a lot of things happening in 2021, a lot of positive growth, I think, too. Certainly not exhaustive. There's a lot of other things that happen. You can go through the list as far as what we've done. But one of the big things we did is complete strategic plan. I think that was something that was sitting on the deck that needed to be finished up. And I think we've, we've got that and we're working on it really well. TC Wireless is fiber project to the premise. Every house and business in town is completed this year, which is awesome. Again, there's no, there was no money from us in that project or the federal government for that matter. It was all TC Wireless's investment and confidence in the community. That was a good investment. And so we're just pleased to death with that investment. I think that's great. Countryside Feed, their expansion project started and is continuing, actually. It continues on today. So that's a big project for them. That'll expand their ability to produce, I think, almost double their ability. Maybe even more than that. I can't remember what Brandon told me the last time we talked. But that continues to move forward. Of course, that creates some, some traffic things. And it's been a little bit of growing pains out there, but I think it's actually gone pretty well by and large. So Bomb Guards, we welcome, oh, welcome Bomb Guards in June and the Building Center in September. So we're two, two new businesses out in the Hillsborough Heights area, which is awesome. We had a couple of other new things kind of coming around and a couple of things in the hopper. So I feel like we have a lot of positive momentum in that moving forward. The Community Plaza Committee designed and ordered the Spray Park, which we have in hand now. And I talked with the installer or uninstaller this week, Tuesday or Monday, excuse me. So we're getting some stuff ready and trying to line out for installation of that. Again, that's, that was all money raised by the Community Plaza Committee. There's no city dollar in that at this point. We saw the successful return of Arts and Crafts Fair. I think that went as well as it could have been. And that was pretty, pretty well received and after taking a break from COVID-19 and the same for the fair. That came back in, in last year from the pandemic. We got a new president in Tabor, Dr. David Jansen. I think he's set a really positive start for that. And we're working really hard with him to, to build some, some new relationships and expand out on some of the things that we're doing. And I'm really excited about the entrepreneurship program that they're, they're talking about and some ways that we can help with that. Of course, the basketball team won state championship. That's always a great thing for the community. We, our KDOT project expands 56 at industrial and the new walking trail was completed finally after how many years? So that was, that's a great thing. Ken Carlson unfortunately had that fatal accident in September. I want to make sure we note that. That's, that is not a highlight of the year, but it's something that we need to acknowledge. And we are working on making sure that that, if you haven't been out there, Ken's family donated a bench. And we, we've made an install out there for that. So you can go out there and sit on a memorial bench. And we're actually talking about potentially working with one of the groups at the high school about doing some improvements out there, too. So maybe some more to come on that. So, you know, something good could potentially come from Ken's unfortunate accident passing. So. Marion County EMS opted to build a new building adjacent to where our future public safety building is going to be. And I think that'll be done here shortly. Commissioner? Yes, maybe. Okay. That's a yes. We're going to take that as a yes. Next few months. Good deal. Work has progressed on our community daycare. Sometimes things just kind of line out with that. And I think things are lining out really well with this project because Trinity Mennonite Church has been talking about donating their building. They have a very small congregation and they're kind of transitioning to some new things. And this may be an opportunity to work with them. Very pleased with how that's come along. That, that's been a really recent development. So there may be something going on with that, but work continues to move forward with that. Of course, the other thing that probably impacted us more than anything was a couple of days in February when it got negative into the negative twenties. It's Winter Storm Yuri created a real situation. It's winter storm Yuri created a real situation for public power and and utilities in general. And so that's where we ended up with our surcharge for the year, for the next two years, actually, on electricity. But I really would applaud KPP's ability to to weather that storm, unintended, with their foresight and everything to have enough cash on hand in order to to weather that and then be able to rebuild it. I want to applaud them for their efforts there, too. So those are kind of the highlights as I see them. We've got every month, we've laid out everything we did in those months. I put in there and tried to make, make notes where I thought I could fill in some of the gaps. Quite a lot. There's always a lot that happens. So thanks. Thank you for the council's hard work and everybody who who put apart, was a part of that. And of course, the city team, I want to thank everybody on that, too. So that's all I had unless you have some, some more thoughts or questions or.
Questions. I would, I would say it's been nice to have completed some check the boxes on a few of these things, especially our, our strategic plan, the fiber project, the hike bike trail. You know, some of that stuff that's just been been hanging around, you know, some stuff we've worked on for a number of years. And it's really nice to see them come to fruition. And, you know, we continue to move forward and move on into, into positive areas. And of course, you know, as everybody may be very well aware by now, our strategic plan is, has three primary goals. And that is childcare, housing and workforce. And, you know, a lot of these things come very much tie into, into that. And so, you know, we need to just continue to keep that focus in front of us, continue to drive hard for it so that the city of Hillsborough is as prepared for the future as we could possibly be. So thank you, Mr. Styles, for your efforts. It's, it's been a good year from the, as you said, from the perspective of getting the right people in the, in the right jobs. You know, right people, right job. That's the key to success, I'll tell you. And I feel like we've done a really good job with the city and, and your leadership has been much appreciated. Thanks. So thank you for that. Okay. Anything else on, on, on the on the year in review? Hearing none, we'll let you give your city administrators report.
Thank you, sir. I just want to follow up. We last, at the end of last year, we talked about potentially bringing our liability insurance agent back into town. And at that point, we were kind of knee deep in the renewal process with our current provider. So we made the decision that wasn't maybe the best idea. But I think it's time to maybe look at that again. I know we've had several local providers who've shown some interest. And any of them that work with EMC, which is our umbrella provider, could service our policy for us. So it's a situation where maybe, maybe we look at doing that. So I'm going to be putting out, well, I'm going to start soliciting agents to see what the interest is and then put together some kind of metric to to measure those and try to figure out if there's a good recommendation for that moving forward. So. Senator Moran, we had a visit with him actually at the last meeting on our special meeting date. A couple of us went to that, to that, I think, Mr. Bai and Mr. Loan and then there, all of that. And I did get a chance to speak to their liaison and the senator a little bit about the blue green algae problem at Marion Reservoir and was able to follow up with their office. And hopefully, we're going to have an appointment with them fairly shortly. Just kind of discuss that to see if there's anything at the federal level that we can do to help address the issue with the reservoir. It is a core of Engineers Reservoir. But like I've said a couple of different times, it's sort of tied up in a who's, who's to blame, who's responsible mess at the state level. And so if they, the senator's office, who's always been a champion for Hillsborough, especially on this issue, can help us with that. And we will certainly bring that, that to bear in this situation to see if we can get some help with this. Kind of jumping off of that, Local Government Day is coming up. And that'll be at the Capitol with, it's an event held by the League of Municipalities. We have an opportunity to meet with our, our representatives and senators. That is the 26th of January in the afternoon. So if you're interested, I know the mayor and I are going, I think. Blank, you're going to go, okay. But if anyone else is interested, we can sign them up and we can.
So that'll be in the afternoon?
It's in the afternoon, yeah. And they usually have an event in the evening, too, but I don't know. We'll have to kind of gauge, you know, that time of year, you never know what it's going to look like. So sales tax collections, I just wanted to bring that up. We rounded out 2021. We had a really strong month. Actually, the best month we've actually had in the history of the sales tax year. So we had 110,575.22 in December. That was a record, at least the last five years when I pulled it. So that ended up putting us at 872,200 or $24.52 for the year, which is 23% higher than 2020, which was a record year. And 47% higher than the rolling average for five years, which is awesome. The mayor and I were talking about that. What, what can we do to explain that? I think there's a couple of things. We've had really strong car sales. I think that's a really important piece. And then we also have sales tax collected from internet services. So that comes into the city now. And I think that was pretty strong, too.
Our new business.
Yeah, and our new, and our new businesses, you know, I think adding bombards in the building center are really brilliant.
And our existing businesses just doing a good job.
Doing a good job, yeah. I agree. I know, I, I can't explain that. That one, I really can't explain. That one's really high. So hopefully we continue that momentum moving into 22. But that was a great year on sales tax collection. So that is that. And then I also wanted to add a note that we need to take new county, city council pictures for our website. So we're going to get you all dressed up and take a new picture of you. I don't know when we're going to do that. I'll let you know at least a meeting ahead of time so that you can be prepared. But we need to get new pictures for the website. So you can get, we can, you can take a glamour shot. If that's something you're into, but we'll figure, we'll figure that out and I'll let you know when we're going to do that.
Very good. Yeah, you know, I think back, you know, when we're kind of reflecting here, I think back to the feedback we got from the League of Kansas Municipalities in 2020 when COVID was first starting. And we were told that we could expect anywhere from a 20 to 30 to 40% loss of revenue as a result of, of the pandemic. And you know what? That never happened. It never happened. Instead, just the opposite happened. We had significant increases in revenue and, you know, people continued to, to, to work or continue to at least pay their utility bills. We didn't have, you know, any significant issues with that or with any, any of our normal tax and other revenue generating funds. So, you know, I guess I could say Hillsborough, we're doing something right and, you know, but that's the result of a lot of people, a lot of hard work and a lot of effort. So my congratulations goes out to the entire city of Hillsborough and everybody that makes up that, 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 that population, both citizens and, and business owners. So much appreciated. Okay. I think we're at the public comment section, are we not? Do we have any members of the public on?
We have a mic. I don't know. If anyone's interested, no, we jumped off. I guess that's a no. I don't, I don't see any public comments here.
Okay. Well, we'll go to council comments. Councilman Driggers, do you have anything for us? Councilman McCarty? Councilman Bai?
Not yet.
And Councilman Garing, any, any last, any last parting shots? But you're in the cheap seats now. Again, we appreciate your, we appreciate your service very much and, and wish you the best in as you go forward and, and you left some big shoes to fill, but I'm convinced that Mr. Bai is ready to go, ready to, ready to try to fill them. So if there are any other business that comes, is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.